I'd like to call the August meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I will call on Commissioner Goodman to do the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for our city and all the leadership. I speak your blessings on our city and all the leaders. We even speak your blessings upon Officer Jackson as he retire. And Father, we know you are watching over our city, and we say thank you now in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wyman, your call or roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Hickx.
Here.
Vice Chairman Staler.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Are there any corrections to the minutes for the July meeting of the minutes? If not, they will stand as presented. Before we get into the public hearing for today, we have, I'm going to accept a motion to amend the agenda. We take a motion for, to add the special presentation to the recognition of Officer Jackson's retirement and to remove one public hearing item from SCARP Solar. Have us with a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? First item we're going to do is we're going to do a presentation. Officer Jackson, you come to the podium, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here today. I'd like to read the resolution of appreciation to Officer Jackson. The City of Suffolk Planning Commission, a resolution of appreciation to Junius H. Jackson, whereas Junior H. Jackson has served and protected and ensured order on behalf of the Suffolk Planning Commission for 28 years, and whereas while serving as the presiding safety officer, he has been dedicated to the betterment of the city and active assured the planning commissions could carry out their duties in a safe and orderly manner. And whereas the Suffolk Planning Commission extends its appreciation to Junius H. Jackson for his service to the community and wishes him the best of all his future endeavors. Now therefore, it would be resolved by the Planning Commission of the City of Suffolk that this resolution of appreciation be presented to Junius H. Jackson for his dedicated service as an important partner and a colleague of the Suffolk City Planning Commission, signed August 20th, 2024 by Arthur L. Singleton. Officer Jackson, I've been at a few Planning Commission meetings, and you have always been there and ensured that we had a safe environment, that we could be at that podium and continue to do our work without worrying about our safety. You always ensured that we had that safety, okay? And are any commissioners like to stay at that seat and make any comments?
I got one question from Mr. Jackson. How many exact meetings have you done? I think you told me some numbers between that and council.
340 Planning Commission meetings, I think.
That's a lot of them.
And we have, from the commissioners, we have a personal card from us, not the city. And we also have a gift for you.
Thank you so much.
That you can, I'll tell you what it is. Maybe I won't tell you what it is. You open up and we'll find out.
Okay. Wow. Oh, wow. This will become. Commissioners, I just want to say thank you. This is, this is really nice.
Not so.
It has been a wrap, but I just want to say. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I just hope and pray that whoever, I try to hold this back. I say, I hope and pray that the officers that's coming behind me will continue to do the best, and you guys have a very difficult job, and I know you're not going to please the public for everything that you say and do, but the 28 years that I've been serving on Planning Commission, I really take my job serious, and I will con take it serious, and I just hope that you all don't forget me, and I won't forget you, and I really, really appreciate everything. You have, you have served this Planning Commission well. I have seen a change. When it first started, it was 15 of Planning Commission. Now it's down to, I think it's eight. Eight, so I've seen some changes, but thank you all so much. I really appreciate you all. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you all for your hard work, and thank you for thinking of me. God bless you all. Thank you.
Mr. Wyman, will you give a clarification on the removal of the SCARP Solar from our agenda?
Yes, certainly. We received correspondence from the applicant, the agent on behalf of the applicant last week as it relates to SCARP Solar, and they have requested a deferral to your October 15th meeting to the, to allow them sometimes, some time to engage with the community and respond to some of your concerns that you expressed during your previous consideration of this item last month. So with that being said, that is the background on that item and why they have requested a deferral and why it would warrant removal from your agenda today.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman.
Mr. Chairman, it would be proper to have a motion to set that public hearing for the October 15th meeting. Otherwise, it may stand as indefinitely tabled and can't come back until someone makes a motion.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we table conditional use permit CUP 2024-006 SCARP Solar to our October 15th, 2024 meeting.
Have a second on that?
Second.
Got a second? Have a voice vote, all in favor? Any discussion or motion? Understand what we're doing? Okay? Can I have a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Okay. Okay. Okay, moving on. Today, we have four items on our public hearing. The public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. This meeting is videotaped and tough for television viewing, for public viewing, and the first item on our agenda today now is item B, the conditional use request CUP 2024-011 machine shop. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request CUP 2024-011 machine shop submitted by Jesse Johnson, Jr. Attorney, on behalf of Raymond Wayne Stevens, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Mary Catherine Binia Stevens, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306, 31406, and 31707 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a machine shop use on property located at 1617 Freeman Mill Road, zoning map 63, parcel 54*A. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit CUP 2024-011. Staff Planner Amy Mervine will present staff's report.
Hi, Kevin. Did you want to clarify why this is being presented again, or did you want me to just...
That we can. So as noted in our staff reports, action originally occurred at your meeting last month on July 16th. However, the legal notice provided in the local newspaper did not meet state requirements as it related specifically to the second required legal advertisement. As such, a new public hearing is required, and that is why we are presenting it to you today.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish a machine shop use on 1617 Freeman Mill Road, located outside of the growth area, Rural Agricultural Use District. The subject property is located in the A Agricultural Zoning District and is approximately 2.3 acres in size. The surrounding properties consist of residential dwellings and agricultural, agricultural land zoned A. The approximate 6,300 square foot metal utility building located at the rear of the property will be used for the machine shop use. Aircraft parts will be inspected, stored, and disassembled within the building, and all work and storage will be contained inside the building. The hours of operation is proposed between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturdays. The applicant's narrative states that this is an internet-based business where parts are shipped or delivered to customers. No commercial trucks will be used, and customers will not pick up or drop off parts. Per the proposed conditions, no outdoor storage of materials, aircraft parts, or equipment shall occur with the screen... Okay, I'm so sorry. I wrote this really... Basically, one of the conditions is just saying that no outdoor storage will be used. All the work and all materials will be stored inside the metal building, and screening shall be provided between the use and the adjoining residential buildings or dwellings. It is staff's opinion that the site in question is appropriate for the proposed use, given the surrounding agricultural uses and machine shop use to take place completely within the existing metal building. Staff received several public comments for the machine shop use on Freeman Mill Road. The headers state another application, but the applicant informed me that they were for this request. This concludes my presentation, and I'll stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thanks, Ms. Mervine. We'll now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Catherine Stevens. My husband Raymond and I live at 1617 Freeman Mill Road in Suffolk. We want to thank the planning staff for all their help with this application and the Planning Commission members for considering this conditional use permit. My father-in-law, Alston Stevens, was a career naval aviation crew chief. After retiring from the Navy, he became the airport manager at South Norfolk Airport, which was located in Chesapeake, Virginia, from 1970 to 1985. He also operated aerial services banner towing service, which was based at South Norfolk Airport, beginning in 1971. Upon the closing of the airport, he and his sons established a banner towing business that was based at Punggol Airport in Virginia Beach, and they rented hangar space at Hampton Roads Executive Airport. My father-in-law died in 2019. Ray and I continued to operate the banner towing business until early 2022. Once my father-in-law died, we inherited a vast inventory of aircraft parts that were stored in several locations in the Hampton Roads vicinity. During the settlement of his estate, we decided to transition from banner towing to used aircraft parts sales. We searched for a location to build what would accommodate all aircraft parts from the estate, as well as the parts that Ray and his brother accumulated through the years. We investigated Franklin, Hampton Roads Executive, Chesapeake Municipal, Grasso Field, Currituck County, and Suffolk airports. No opportunities for building were available. Ray was a lifelong Norfolk resident. We decided that a move to Suffolk to build our home and consolidate our business at one location would be our best option. This was a big transition from his 34 years of operating an aerial advertising business. In May of 2021, we purchased 2.37 acres in Suffolk. I worked with our builder to acquire all necessary permits for the construction of our home and detached garage. Once the house construction was approaching completion, we researched and contracted to have a 6,300 square foot metal building constructed to house all the aircraft parts. Prior to ordering the building in the spring of 2022, I obtained the permits for its construction with the City of Suffolk. Once we moved into our new home during the summer of 2022, I applied for and obtained a business license for an internet-based aircraft parts sales business with the City of Suffolk. At that time, the aircraft parts were located off-site. I was unaware of the need to obtain a conditional use permit prior to the construction of this building. During this CUP process, we've learned about neighbors' concerns regarding additional traffic, signage, and property values. Additional traffic concern. Regarding our business increasing traffic on Freeman Mill Road, since we work from home, we are not making daily commutes to and from our home to a workplace as our adjoining neighbors. Our business reduces the traffic usage on Freeman Mill Road since we are a home-based business. Ray or I take all parcels to the shipper and do not engage parcel pickup services at this address. There is personal delivery truck traffic from Amazon, USPS, UPS, and FedEx, just like all adjoining neighbors. We do have a dumpster that is scheduled for emptying once a month. Out of the past eight months, we've had eight, six pickups. When there's been a heavy rain or the dumpster isn't full, we've canceled the pickup to minimize traffic on Freeman Mill Road and on our shared driveway. Property values and signage concerns. Between our home, garage, and building, we have about an $800,000 investment. We are concerned about our property values as well as our neighbors. All four properties along the shared driveway have a lower elevation than the farm field that borders our properties. When we have heavy rains, the water drains from the farm field onto all of the neighboring properties. When we constructed our building, we dug a pond to accommodate the runoff from the farm field, and we included underground drainage from the roof of the building into the pond so that we would help keep the entire neighborhood drier for all the neighbors. We take pride in our property and are invested in maintaining and increasing its value and the value of neighboring properties. Our vehicles and trailers are stored outside the building. Aircraft disassembly work takes place inside the building, as stated in our application. Since we are an internet-based business, we have no need for signage as we deliver parts to the shipper and to local customers. We did place a help-wanted sign in our neighbor's property for a short while. We did have a property survey completed. It revealed that one of our neighbors had installed a fence on our property. Once our neighbor saw where the boundary was located, the fence was taken down. We then installed a property line indicator along the property line to ensure that we didn't drive on the neighbor's property when backing up or turning around vehicles or trailers. This neighbor then planted a line of shrubs near the property line in their front yard. This indicated to us that they didn't like the view of the pad in front of the building and the driveway. We obtained the necessary permit from the zoning department prior to the installation of a 62-foot-long privacy fence along the side of the building pad and part of the driveway to obstruct the view of the neighbors to the dumpster and our vehicles. We work to address any concerns communicated to us by our neighbors. It is our belief that aerial services benefits Suffolk community by employment of a part-time resident, Jack Hall. This business supports the agricultural sector of our community by being a source for used aircraft parts for crop dusting and aerial planning operations. We sell parts locally, nationally, and internationally. Issuance of this conditional use permit shows our customers that Suffolk is a welcoming business and agricultural community. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of our conditional use permit application.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? We have about three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience in opposition to this request?
Yes, good afternoon. This is my first time here. Very exciting. I don't have a lot of history other than...
Give us your name, please.
My name is Betsy Newman, and I live on Freeman Mill Road, and I have for almost 18 years. I moved to the country to be in the country, as most people do that move to Whaleyville. You want to have the freedom and the peace and quiet, and it's just a different way of life. Now, I don't live on the driveway, and I have absolutely nothing against these people and their business. This is something we don't need in our neighborhood. These people have invested in homes to be in the country, not 300 foot from a warehouse. That's 6,300 square foot warehouse. I would be devastated if it was beside me. You know, it is a driveway. It is not on the main road. I don't know how much traffic there is on Freeman Mill. I do know that our bridge is about to collapse, but my thing is, if you set a precedence for one, then you just invite everybody. If it's not going to be agricultural, then you have to do something about that. But if it's agricultural, then it needs to stay in that perimeter. I do understand that he has airplane parts, and I'm sure a lot of them are old, and they're redoing planes and everything, and that's fine, but it shouldn't be done 300 foot from somebody's back door. And as far as noise, it's a metal building. What if you, then you get a machine shop, then you get all this equipment going, plus we have the drainage pond out front, and that's probably, in a way, a good thing. What about the two children next door? The drainage pond is right on the driveway. What's to prevent these children from falling in? It's just a precaution. I know, I'm not against anybody having a business, and I'm not against Suffolk having business, but there comes a time when you've got to make a decision. You know, we have people that want this kind of living. They pay for this kind of living, and they shouldn't have to just settle when they go to sell their house. You know, I don't know many people in this room that want to live beside a warehouse with a forklift and bringing stuff in and ratchets taking parts away. I just don't believe that. So that is just me, and I want to take this opportunity to try to speak up for my neighborhood, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? I hear none. That would be the time for opposition rebuttal. Mrs. Stevens, do you have any comments to address?
My comments to address this are, number one, the building isn't any bigger than any of the other agricultural buildings that are in this area. Two, as far as the noise is concerned, we actually have, this building is fully insulated. We don't make noise. You wouldn't know that we have a machine shop in there because pretty much what my husband does is he takes airplanes apart. The machining work is actually done elsewhere. He just disassembles airplanes. We don't have a lot of traffic. We're not increasing the traffic. We actually, by our home and our building, we're increasing the value of the adjoining neighbors. So I don't really see what the issue is for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. We will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of CUP 2024-011.
Motion from Commissioner Eberwine?
Second.
We got a second from Commissioner Hickx. Any discussion under motions? I'm going to call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Mrs. Stevens and Mr. Stevens, this has a favorable motion from this body going to City Council, and it'll be going to City Council tomorrow night. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the City of Suffolk Comprehensive Plan update. Mr. Wyman, you'll read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. The City of Suffolk Comprehensive Plan update submitted by the City of Suffolk Department of Planning and Community Development on behalf of the Suffolk Planning Commission. Consideration shall be given to the recommendation for and adoption of the City of Suffolk Comprehensive Plan Update Suffolk 2045, as submitted by the Department of Planning and Community Development. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to amend the Comprehensive Plan for 2035 and adopt Suffolk 2045, City of Suffolk's Comprehensive Plan. Our Comprehensive Planning Manager, Keith Kennedy, will provide you with an overview of the changes from last month, and similar to the last public hearing, this is coming back before you all due to a technicality as it related to advertising requirements for the legal act.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As Mr. Wyman stated, this is a public hearing for consideration of the Planning Commission, by the Planning Commission of a recommendation to City Council for approval of the 2045 update of Suffolk's Comprehensive Plan. And as also mentioned, this is a repeat essentially of the action or the item that you heard at your public hearing in July. So this is the same plan essentially with some minor changes, and I'll talk a little bit about those since that time. I will be presenting a similar presentation, again, for the benefit of the public, get the full scope of the plan, a little bit abbreviated, but essentially covering the same items, and look forward to your action today, and I'll stand by at the completion of the presentation and the public hearing and answer any questions that might, that might come up. As we did back in July, we think it's really important to start at the beginning and set the context for this important project. A slide that we use quite a bit in our community engagement efforts, laying out the key steps of this process and the timeline. Two and a half year process, clearly a significant commitment of time of many, many folks who were participating in the process along the way. A clear process that builds on earlier steps, kind of a beginning process there, preparation, the analysis part, the second stage, and bringing out some big ideas of things to consider, and finally, the stage that we're in now, the adoption of the plan. With community engagement, literally from the beginning all the way through this process, with the intention of arriving at this stage, we actually published a roughly 90% complete document back in February and went back out to the community for additional input. So that's the path that's led us up to where we are today, and these are some key points that I want to make today. And again, starting... And again, starting out with sort of why we're here. What is the goal that we're trying to accomplish with this plan update, looking at some state code requirements that directly apply and really define the task for us, some of the guiding values that drive the process? And also touching on the joint session that the commission had with the City Council, which generated a number of substantial changes. I want to make sure those are still clear. We've adopted those changes and gone back with that for your recommendation today. And then finally, talk a little bit about putting this plan into action. How does it get implemented, and what steps are we anticipating? And then finally, next steps in the process. So again, looking at the Code of Virginia and what these plans seek to accomplish, again, very common for cities, counties, and towns who are required to adopt these plans to go through a process like this about every five years, with the main goal of recommending a general strategy for the coordinated development of the community. That's the single task that we're after here, and to coordinate that physical development with the job of municipal government to provide services to serve that development and coordinate that process going forward. The current plan in effect in Suffolk right now, the 2035 plan, was adopted in April 2015. So we're nine years plus in terms of the time that has passed since that adoption of the plan. So a good time to evaluate that plan and consider an update. Another big advantage that we believe Suffolk has is, this is actually the fourth plan in a series of plans around this kind of development strategy that Suffolk has been implementing, and it's followed some key guiding values that have largely not changed as these updates have occurred. Valuing character and types of places, being aware of the impact that growth has on the transportation network, the importance of understanding and considering economic development opportunities that may benefit the community. Perhaps even more important in this round of plan updates, looking at the diversity of housing stock, particularly in the affordability context of that housing. Again, another set of guiding values that we're carrying forward, recognizing the natural, cultural, and historic assets that are expansive and very, very important in the City of Suffolk, focusing on, again, that major function of municipality, providing quality services and facilities while that growth is going on and coordinating that process. Another key factor for Suffolk, and we'll continue to talk about this, is the agricultural heritage of our city and agriculture as an important industry in our city, and thinking about in the context of growing, how do we preserve that heritage? And also recognizing that we're part of a region, particularly when it comes to economic development opportunities, transportation issues, for example, important to kind of keep that context in mind. So again, I want to look back to that May 1 joint work session and talk about some of the things that came out of that session, direction that we received as staff, and some changes that we have made as a result of that. And there are really four key areas that I want to focus on. The biggest change, really throughout the whole process, is taking feedback on the growth area boundary and making revisions to that as we go along, a major change in that category. We made some changes and made a pretty solid recommendation around the village area plans, but went back and took another look at the villages in the Suffolk Peninsula and made some language changes there. We've also recommended a new kind of document, a detailed master plan around transportation. We think we've got good support for that recommendation. We did take that direction to go back and provide a little more detail on what we mean by a master transportation plan. And finally, a lot of comments around a really important concept for us, which is a new land use category that we're calling employment centers. We want to talk a little bit about what we're trying to accomplish there and what we think this recommendation means going forward. So again, starting with that first issue, revisions to the growth area boundary, really a constant conversation throughout this two-year process about the growth area boundary and the opportunities that were available to us that we should consider, as well as the impacts that that has. One of the basic things that's considered for these updates throughout this twenty-five-year period. So we actually started with a very conceptual map. You all might remember sort of a bubble line out of the 460 corridor, the 58 corridor, the Route 10 corridor, the connection between the two growth areas. Again, just to begin to get the conversation going on what we were thinking about with growth area boundaries. So this was published back in February of 2024. We had five options that we put on the table, A through E, and again, provided that information and received feedback from the community. We then came back in May 2024 with a reduction of that growth area boundary. This is the map that we published for public comment. We were now down to three options, Area A, again, connecting the two, Area B, the 460 corridor, and Area C, a very small area that essentially was developed and just made sense to be in the growth area. This is what we're currently proposing. We made an additional change to the growth area boundary going out west of the 460 corridor, reduced that area. So this is what's currently in our recommendation for adoption and consideration by the planning commission. What we currently have on this map is a 5,900-acre expansion, which I've gone back and run some additional numbers on the percentage of that growth. Twelve-and-a-half percent would be what we'd be recommending or are recommending today. If you look at the expansion in 2015, that was about a 2,300-acre expansion, relatively smaller one, about five percent of the existing area. And finally, the first expansion back in 2006, about 5,600 acres, or about fourteen percent of the growth area boundary at that time. So again, just some numbers to give you in order of magnitude of how this expansion compares to earlier efforts undertaken by City Council. In acres, larger than the first expansion, but a little smaller actually in terms of the percentage of expansion than that first one that we recommended, this is actually about a forty-six percent decrease from the original proposal made back in February. So again, a big change, something that we've been working on closely from the beginning, really, in this process. So that's one change since the February draft. We also recommended in this document, a second issue that we talked about in the work session, is going back and updating the village plans that were developed in Suffolk. Areas of important activity, important historical significance, cultural significance in Suffolk that have a lot of attachment in the community. One of the comments that we received was that to be sure that we were considering the commercial uses in these villages, and we were very much aware of that. That's one of the big issues that these plans need to explore. The old, what we sometimes call mom-and-pop retail, that was the thing of the day, the thing in the market when these villages were developed, is not the strongest market in commercial today. The buildings are still there, so looking at the traditional neighborhood-focused commercial uses that are there today, can they be replaced? What other things should we consider going forward? So this language was added to make sure that we were sending the message that the reuse and preservation of these commercial uses was a big part of the scope of work for doing these village plans. So that was the second area that we investigated. And third area, again, I mentioned the really consistent feedback that I'm sure you all hear as planning commissioners, and we certainly heard through this process, of the growing congestion in the city, truck traffic, train traffic, the sense that we need a better strategy, a more detailed planning effort to help us plan for this infrastructure challenge that we face. So we added this language that you'll find on page 100, providing some detail by what we mean by a master transportation plan, fairly common for localities that are in a similar position to Suffolk in terms of the growth that we're experiencing, particularly in traffic, traffic volume. So that's a change, an important change that we want to call your attention to as well. And finally, again, dating back to that work session, some good conversation and input around the employment centers land use recommendation that was a key part of our future land use plan. So I want to break that down for you a little bit today, talk about some of the development trends that have led up to this recommendation, and finally, a language change that we have recommended be considered here as well. So I'm going to do my best to walk you through this slide. And here, again, I'll present a abbreviated version of what we presented at your July meeting. So a good place to start is, what's purple on the map now, you know? And so I want to walk you through what that is, looking first at the northern growth area. And you see down at the bottom of the slide, a large employment center designation. That is the North Gate Commerce Park that I'm sure many of you all are familiar with. Largely, this reflects M1 and M2 zoning in the uses that that district presents. So shifting now to the central growth area, and again, sort of walking you around the map here in terms of direction, and what do we find in the growth area boundary upwards of the, I don't know if I can point at this or not, but the area that's, again, up in the right-hand corner, top of the map, is the Willroy Road Industrial Park. That's an existing, developed industrial park. And if you move, again, clockwise, you'll find the SIPSA Regional Landfill in the Auto Junkyards as you come into Suffolk on 58, and then coming around to the south and to the west, the existing Carolina Road, Dill Road industrial area. And finally, the big pointed area that you see at the bottom of the map, the Suffolk Executive Airport is in that district as well. And then moving up to, moving up into the west at the 58 corridor area, you find the Center Point Commerce Park. And finally, up again to the, moving up into the east, the Port 460 Logistics Center. So roughly eighty-six percent of the area that's in purple on this map is within the existing growth area and largely built out. And we talked about that in the meeting back in July, with the only new area being the 460 growth area that's proposed, which is about fourteen percent of, you know, the entire area that is found under this land use designation. So again, we want to be clear about what that designation means and why it's there. Here's an aerial photo that we shared of the Willroy Road Industrial Park. Again, just to give you an idea of the existing parks that are out there and the fact that they are largely developed. This park developed in the 1980s, back when we used to call it industrial parks. And the next slide I'll share with you, again, just one more example. This is the Center Point Commerce Park, again, out 58 west, another largely fully-developed park, and facilities that have a number of advantages for us, for the City of Suffolk, both in terms of providing jobs for the community, but also these uses consistently provide net local tax revenue to the community to pay for other services, and frankly, at a level that allows the council to keep the real estate tax rate lower. So significant sources of net revenue over long periods of time, in addition to creating jobs for the community. So a really big part of what we're recommending in the current plan is to continue that type of development in the city, plan for good locations for these uses. Again, that'll require rezonings and consideration of whether those uses are appropriate in a particular location. But this is really the first step in the process of indicating this is something that we think is important and it should be a part of our land use plan. I also mentioned we added some language. We want to be, provide a predictable indication of where these different uses should go, but we don't want to be too rigid in that definition. So one of the inputs that we received is to consider that at some point in the future, those large buildings may be appropriate for them to transition to another use. And we know generally what we think those uses might be that would still be appropriate for those locations. So we've actually added this language into the plan on page 50, which identifies compatible adaptive reuse of these buildings as a secondary use that, again, from a policy standpoint, would make sense for these uses in the surrounding areas, and identify some of those uses, again, in fairly broad terms, as a policy direction to prevent from being too narrow in our thinking about the policies for these centers. So that's the fourth area that came out of the work session, and again, focusing on the substantive changes that we've recommended and we want folks to know about in the plan. I want to shift gears a little bit and talk about, again, as this is a revision and an update, what's new in this plan, you know, versus 2035? And again, I'll touch on what I think some of the bigger areas are and provide a little bit of detail. And again, I think these are pretty well-known, the level of community engagement this time around, the different kinds of development opportunities that we found with this plan that didn't exist in earlier updates. Again, that's the purpose of doing this, look at what's changed and what do we need to adjust to. The additional emphasis that we placed in this plan on preserving agricultural land. With that additional pressure on that land use, we felt it was important, and we saw an opportunity to provide additional recommendations in this category. And finally, again, as I mentioned, a more directed approach to the future land use plan. And I'll touch on that again just briefly. A lot of activity, again, starting back in the spring and summer of 2022, to get the word out in the community that we were undertaking this effort again, and letting folks know what this was all about, what's our schedule, and encouraging them to participate, really all the way through, even through this last spring, getting out to the community in multiple ways to encourage and receive public input. That's been a real hallmark of this particular plan update. We did include some metrics in the plan to explain this effort and some of the results that we received. We actually set out with, I believe it was two rounds of public engagement. We took the opportunity, as we began this process, to realize additional work was going to be needed, extended the schedule and changed the scope of services. Finally, ended up with four really major efforts and community engagement running through March of 2024. Something that I didn't share with you back in July, but I want to call your attention to this, something else that we heard recently is that, it's a big document, things are changing, it's hard to figure out what's changed, you know, since that version came out in February. So we actually developed what I'm calling a track changes version of the document to document all the changes that occurred from that February- document all the changes that occurred from that February draft to the current draft that you're looking at today. Don't expect you to read this. I think you do have it in your packet, though. It actually identifies the changes and provides a code. So, you can actually go to this document and find out what we've been working on and the changes that we've made. I think you'll find most of these are small changes. We think they're important. We want to be transparent about what we're doing and be responsive to the many, many folks who are following this plan very, very closely, that we're listening, we're making changes as we go along. We've focused in our public presentations on the key changes, the really big ones that are going to affect the outcome and the application of this document. So, that's a change. This whole document is actually posted on our website as well. If you look at the, at the color code, the blue means it's new text, the yellow means we've replaced some text, and the red pin is just an indication of something that has been removed, a sentence or a graph that has been, has been eliminated. And so, that's the changes that you see in the text. We went to this format for the, the map changes, just kind of drawing a bubble and a description of how those, how those changes were, were made. So, you'll find that in your package and on our website as well. And again, really an effort to be transparent about what we're working on and what in the plan is changing as we go forward. So, I also mentioned a couple of things that, that are new and particularly different types of development opportunities. And, and these are really important, I think, to recognize because they do become drivers of the policies that we recommend. While Suffolk has had decades, really, of population growth, it increased during this last period, and we're projecting it to grow even faster going forward. So, a really key factor for us, this is an attractive place. People want to live here, people want to invest here, and it's, and it's something we need to consider as we update this plan. The port has been through also a decades process of reinvesting in the port, both on the facility and in the channels, that have caused significant increases in activity at the port with real implications for landside issues in the region and frankly, across the state. Additional traffic moving through the port and investors who want to be here because of that expansion, and that affects land use for our community, I think, as we've already seen. So, an opportunity that we didn't have to think about, or a challenge that we didn't have to think about in some, some of the earlier updates. We also had, due largely to changes at the state level, frankly, a new market for utility scale solar that we didn't have to think about, you know, nine years ago or five years ago. So, that, when you think about what's new, you know, and why this update is so important, I think those are the, three of the key issues that, that you have to consider and, and make adjustments for. So, again, those were inputs to this question about whether or not we think our growth area boundary is important, and what are some of the advantage that can accrue to us for doing that? They can specifically about those changes and how that might best serve us going forward. So, again, looking at job creation opportunities, looking at ways to achieve that balance in terms of our tax base, leveraging the private investment and public investment that comes from these developments, and again, elevating the quality and updating, frankly, the commercial and industrial facilities that we have here in Suffolk. So, again, back to that category of what's new, I mentioned earlier, it's a different environment for us now with agricultural advisory committee, a new specialist position that's been created to help staff that function. So, we've included a number of action items in the plan, coming from our own research on best practices here, but also actually coming from the committee that is meeting and providing us with their feedback as we go forward. So, the plan does include a number of detailed recommendations for addressing this opportunity and preserving this part of Suffolk that is special going forward. Again, I won't spend a lot of time on these. These haven't changed since our last meeting, but we do think this is a really important change, something that we didn't do with the earlier plan and that we will be able to do going forward with this plan. So, a number of items in there that we think provides direction to achieving this goal. So, finally, we spent a fair amount of time on this. I'll call it our fourth kind of key issue of what's new, is clearly a new look in terms of what our land use plan looks like, you know? Before, we had six colors, six categories, fairly broad. Many people thought they were too broad. So, we've replaced that with a recommendation that gives us more detail. And again, we think the big benefit there is just predictability, really across the board, for everyone involved in the land use business, as certainly you all are, a little more direction in terms of what we're looking for, particularly for those places that we expect to change, but also to preserve the places that we don't want to change. We actually created, for example, a parks category, you know, so didn't have that before. So, clearly, it allows us to say some things we don't want to change. You want to preserve what we already have. So, finally, I want to shift gears a little bit and talk about kind of the legacy or the things that we have built on in the plan. Again, just touching on a couple of key areas. We've kind of recognized that we've got this longstanding focused growth strategy that we're building on, and that just how diverse of a community that we are. We've got suburban, rural, and, and urban, all-in-one, all-in-one community, and that's an important part of who we are. We've got those things that we want to continue to recognize and protect going forward. And we want to continue to invest, this is our capital budget primarily, in this focused growth approach and support that strategy. So, just one of the ways that we found that helped to communicate this idea of, of just how diverse land use is in Suffolk, is this graph, which is actually a breakdown of those colors on the future land use map. So, if you, if you add these up, in the 430 square miles, you've got about 83% of our land use in that rural and open space category, and a relatively small amount, 17% in that urban and suburban category. So, clearly, we will continue to be a diverse community that has a lot of rural agricultural land and, and open space going forward. So, again, I won't belabor the subject too much, but clearly, we want to continue to reserve what's, what's special in Suffolk. I talked about the recommendations around agricultural land preservation, the recommendations really unique to this plan, to update our villages and downtown, small area plans. And again, like, like most communities, we've got a good, a good zoning ordinance, but we need to stay on top of that as the real estate market changes. And, and so, we've identified a couple of priority code amendments because it's really the zoning ordinance that in many ways helps to protect, again, what we think is special in our city. So, the third area, and again, I'll ask you to settle for my sort of summary of the department heads detail that they provided back in July of how we are investing in this focused growth strategy that includes in parks and recreation facilities, other capital buildings and programs, again, just a sample of projects that are completed or underway or planned. We talked about, Paul Rattell did, the importance of coordinating our growth strategy with our investments in water and sewer utilities. And Robert Lewis touched on the importance of coordinating those investments in transportation with our strategy. So, again, don't want to lose sight of the fact that these land use issues and infrastructure issues are very much coordinated in this project, and this plan is designed to help continue that going forward. So, again, it's a plan, but it identifies some specific recommendations for going forward. This plan lays out a number of key findings and directions for us to take going forward in terms of recommendations. I think I've touched on many of these in the presentation. Ready to get to work on these after adoption, and anxious to, anxious to do that. And finally, this is where we are today. I put a couple of dates in here that I think are important to this process. We briefed you all in a work session back in, in June 18. The first public hearing was back in July 16. We went the following day and updated the city council on the, on the project in a work session. And again, today, with the second public hearing for you all. And tomorrow, we will be making this recommendation to city council. So, Mr. Chairman, that kind of concludes my sort of formal remarks. I'd be happy to come back up at the end of the public hearing portion of the presentation with any concluding comments or to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Now off to a public hearing, and I think Mr. Kennedy, he's ran out of steam to make any other presentation. So, as far as the proponents, we'll close that session, and we'll go to the opposition session. And we got, what, 15 minutes? 15 minutes. Anyone in opposition? Come up and give us your name, please.
Commissioner, my name is Chess Harris. I live at 323 Tyndles Court, North Suffolk. I've been a resident here for over 20 years. I represent six communities that are in that little island bubble on the northwest corner of the northern growth area, from Cedar Point to Governor's Point and Sleepy Lake and Crestview and the whole collection of us up there, about a little over 3,200 residents and 1,200-plus homes. Got two points. The first one, I think one of the most important things that's come from this session dealing with the comprehensive plan is the amount of resident input and louting, which has come from the commission and, and from the council, has been, I think, well-deserved because you've had a very engaged community that's been part of this. 7,500 written comments from, I take that back, 7,500 resident inputs to the city as updated by Mr. Kennedy. Well, we appreciate the planning division honoring the FOIA requests to, what are those comments that came in? So, we'll kind of play a short game of Family Feud, because the question I haven't seen, that I would like to know what the answer is, is the number one comment from residents concerning the comprehensive plan was, just write that down, what we think it was?
You make your presentation, sir. We don't ask your questions.
I understand, I understand. It was a pregnant pause. I apologize. The answer was traffic congestion, the number one. So, with 20 minutes that Mr. Kennedy talked about, the details of development growth, Miss Six, going to your question. Last time we met here, you asked about transportation. What's the transportation plan, which is the number one concern of residents? I mean, is the four-fives plan being done over the next five years, and this is what we're going to do with the Hampton Roads Transportation Authority? And find something like that in the plan that answers the number one concern of residents. It's sprinkled in little pieces and parts. Go to page 99, which is the visionary projects for the city. Anything in there about the bridges? Or anything in there about that 17 connection to the bridges? The answer is no. It's the number one concern. Where is it in this plan? So, I'll leave that one aside. Second point deals with the commission and resident input to the commission. When residents come and make a presentation, and I'm going to go to the last session because there were four people that spoke in opposition to the plan. There were six topics specifically and questions asked of the commission, six. None of them were answered. There was discussion about a lot of things, but they weren't answered. So, the question that I have, does the commission have a responsibility, a commitment to residents? And if a resident asked a question of the commission, that there's an answer, an assessment, or the commission takes a position and an answer? So, the first one from Citizens Voice, how come all these small changes that we've been submitting since the 6th of April still are in the plan? Simple question. The answer could have been, oh, we got a problem with the editor. We had to replace it. We'll have those fixed in the next 60 days. That's a good answer. Accountability for a question asked by a resident. From the Care for Suffolk folks, they had two questions. Voice of the, the Citizens Voice had three questions. Care for Suffolk had two. Why don't we have a transportation plan? The answer could be a simple one. We don't have the funds for it this year. It's going to be funded next year with a target for delivery by March. Answer to a question. Why don't we have a fiscal assessment plan about having infrastructure and a revenue strategy that's going to fund this development so that, in fact, an infrastructure is in place and we're not caught like we are right now with a transportation plan that's broken? We can't even get out of our development in Governor's Point and Cedar Point two days a week minimum because of the traffic backlog. And oh, by the way, when you read the plan on traffic congestion, do you know where the, where the narrative is, where the traffic congestion is in the afternoons, the PM congestion? It's downtown and on I-664. There isn't a word in there about 17 or 58. Who's reading the plan? What's important to residents? If a citizen asks a question, should we expect an answer from the commission? Even if we don't know the answer, we're going to get it. So, there's a sense of accountability. We take the time to read it. The last plan, 171 pages. Let's just say a minute per page, and that's a fast reader. Two hours. Now, let's take a look at the appendix. Another two hours. We do that. And between the 6 April plan, the one published in May, the one published in April, correction, in July, the same errors. Did you know that there was a railroad track that went from the eastern shore to Virginia Beach? It took two and a half drafts of the plan before resident input was even acknowledged, that that, ah, that's a ferry. And that was done away with two decades ago. Little things like that, the details make a plan. And one of the biggest details from your residents is a transportation. We would like an answer. When is the transportation plan going to be published? To the detail of growth that we've seen in this narration that Mr. Kennedy, we deserve that level of clarity. It's our concern about the city. Thank you very much.
Tom Ryan, excuse me, Tom Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows, Suffolk, Virginia. I'm a little confused, and it's probably me. I thought this was just a public forum, the comment on the plan, not to speak for it against it. So, this is not against the plan, just a comment. So, good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I am representing Citizens Voice today, a local nonprofit, whose mission it is to amplify the voices of citizens as it relates to land use issues. As you know, many, many citizens cannot attend planning or council meetings, but love their city and want their voices to be heard. I'm sure, I'm not sure I can offer you much different today than you've already heard, but I think you'll be interested as it comes from a group of residents that you don't normally hear from, teenagers and schoolchildren. Last week, Citizens Voice board members met with approximately 30
30 members of Hope for Suffolk. Hope for Suffolk was formed in Suffolk in 2010 as a community development initiative to assist families in crisis. Their purpose is to provide participating teens and their families with the opportunities, environment, and support needed to thrive physically, mentally, emotionally, spiritually, relationshiply, and professionally. These teens are our future. They're our worker, future workers, our future first responders, teachers, parents, taxpayers, voters, decision-makers, leaders, and more. They were sharp kids, let me tell you. I was impressed. I had no idea. We asked them what they thought they would like to see in the city today and in the future. And here's what they said in their own words. I may paraphrase a little, but I'm not going to put it in my own words. More sidewalks, better methods of transportation, fix the potholes, no more car washes and storage units, keep the tractors and trailers off the back roads, fix the traffic backups, too much amount of complexes, meaning high-density housing, need for safer crosswalks on busy roadways, better sources of entertainment, more restaurants, bowling theaters, better schools and transportation methods, overpopulation among my peers, maintenance issues, safety concerns, these are at the schools, a new aquatic center in the north end, more crosswalks, sidewalks, less gas stations, skating rinks, it goes on. The things I heard were, that were very, that hit me hardest was, I wish my, I wish my mom didn't have to shop for groceries at a gas station. I wish I didn't have to walk down the street and worry about getting hit by a tractor trailer. Those were the kind of things we heard from these kids. They said, instead of warehouses, why don't you put up some tech centers? You know, there's too much traffic, better playgrounds, swing sets. Why isn't there a better engaged music and art organization within the city to get them involved? You know, they were sitting there drawing when we were talking, and their skill set was unbelievable. I mean, these kids, and this program does so much for these children. I wish I could have someone here today, but because of school preparations that had, they couldn't make it. But it was incredible. And I remember when we first started this process, one of the comments that was publicly made by this group, and I'm not pointing at anybody, but the group was, we need to find a way to get in touch with younger children, younger adults in this community to find out what they want. These are the people who are going to be living here and making decisions for us and supporting us five, 10, 20 years from now. In 2045, they're going to be the ones that this plan is going to impact more than anyone else. And I, you know, regardless of what you do today, I ask you that you reach out to this program, meet with these kids. We did. They're not hiding. They said they've contacted the city many times, and they've contacted the Suffolk News Herald many times to try to sit down and have a conversation with the city, with the newspaper, about what they do, who they are. You know, they provide scholarships. They provide these kids with opportunities where they're involved with agricultural initiative all summer long, to keep them off the streets, to give them something to do, to educate them. They have groups like us come in at least once a month to meet, provide meals for them, and speak to them on an adult, respectful basis. And again, I ask you to do the same. Regardless of whether you vote for this or against this, as you move forward in your positions, I think you have a responsibility to our future to sit down with these children, children, and talk to them as peers. Because they're the ones who are going to take this city forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. We have two minutes left for the opposition.
Good afternoon. Perhaps I should have taken time in the proponents, as Mr. Ryan just said. Mine is, as I always come before, planning commission, thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Name, please.
My name is Kelly. One second, sir. I have a speech defect. I appreciate you. My name is Kelly Hingler, and I am at 9345 Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia. So, in one minute and 16 seconds, as a policy analyst, I look at each one of you in every borough. And I say to you that we, under 36 CFR Part 60 and Virginia Code 10.1-22.0, are non-compliant by 30 years. What that is, is the National Historic Preservation Act, we are required to have a survey of every corner of the city every 10 years. The last one was done in 1988, 1989, and preceded the federal block grant money that was issued so that we could study, a preliminary study, not a paper project, of our villages. What are the villages? Under smart growth, under this pantheon of new development, we have urban districts. What is important to us for the Hampton Roads PDC and the region is that we are centered in our water, stormwater, and wastewater in urban districts. Within those urban districts, we have Huntersville, which is a Nansman borough, which we did not have that borough at the time of the merger, and Pewsville. I could go on. Those are now encaptured up against the I-664. But what we do is have rural areas of taxpayers across this entire community. Those federal block grant funds were intended to be able to evaluate them just as much as any other because they are paying the taxes. Under stormwater, which has now been updated 2023 since the first time since 1992, the individual villages, as well as the individual original neighborhoods, are all historic. 30 years, we are behind. We are non-compliant with federal law because, not because we want historic overlay districts like downtown everywhere, but we want the money. We want the reinvestment money, not the de-investment. In each one of these villages, they should all have a stormwater plan, and I hear you coughing behind me. At the time of this current 1992 to revision to 2023, whether you are aware of this or not, a new state permit for stormwater by the EPA has been adopted by the DEQ and our city. That means that every single census-settled area of this community, whether it's in the urban area where our water, urban water, urban stormwater, urban wastewater is, which we call the growth areas, or any one of these villages for 50 years who sat as towns, unincorporated, incorporated, who do not have a stormwater plan, by what you will hear coming up as the village initiatives of ordinances. We do not have a stormwater plan for each one of the villages and neighborhoods, whether they're in the urban area or whether they're in the rural area outside of our actual stormwater permit area for Suffolk. This is a very serious problem, and I thank you for allowing me to make that comment over time. Thank you so much.
That ends the time for opposition. Mr. Kennedy, you have any comments you want to add to what was said?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to call your attention to a couple of points that might be helpful right now. We talked at the early part of the presentation, and I think it's worth touching on the purpose of this plan under the state code and consistent with previous plans. I mean, this is the one time, the one document that lays out a general plan for the growth of the city, the whole city, not portions of the city, and to consider changes that have occurred and to update how you've done that in the past. And we think this plan does that really well, you know? So, when that's your focus, there are detailed studies, things that you don't consider. It's really about the big picture, how do we want to grow as a city, as an entire city. We think that this plan achieves that. And when it comes to community engagement, again, I'll call your attention to the effort that we've been under for the past couple of years, really to reach out to all of the interests in all of the city. Residents are very, very important, and we'll continue to work with them in implementation of this plan going forward. But the business community is important as well, and really all areas of the city. You have the farming community, folks who are working hard to protect the environment of the city, the historical integrity of the city. We reach out to as many of these groups as we can find and who will be willing to sit on a steering committee, come to a meeting, and come to an open house and talk to us. And our job is really to synthesize all that input, because again, we're looking at the benefit of the overall city and find a path going forward. So, it isn't unusual to find different interest groups and stakeholders having different priorities and different, frankly, directions for the city. We invite that, frankly. And when you set up a broad community engagement process like the one that we have and that we followed, you learn a lot, and I hope you all learn a lot, too, about what people in the city care about and really how diverse those interests are. And again, sometimes they do conflict. So, our job is to synthesize that and identify a broad strategy that we think we can get broad agreement on, and that will continue to achieve those cities' long-term values and goals going forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I will now close the public hearings. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion? Edwards, you're not going to move forward with this?
No.
Sent this to council last month, then we had to review this this month because of a technicality.
I had a question for the city attorney regarding the last comment made on the non-compliance with the federal law. I missed that. Is that something that needs to be addressed?
Not in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, all right.
I can't make a motion, okay?
Well, the only comment that I have, Mr. Chairman, is the same, similar comments that I think we made last time we were here, has to do with the fact that it is a plan. We've got the update, which was the new one, the draft as of August 7th, 161 pages on this, and also the thousands of public comments that we have reviewed. And there is, I would agree, that transportation is certainly an issue that needs to be focused on, but there's a lot of, a lot of things having to do with the transportation, the roads, and all that sort of thing, because the city has to go through various agencies of the state, not only local, but also statewide, and also federal. So, there's a lot of moving parts connected to that. And in the plan, you can't, this type of plan, you can't be very specific about that because we don't know when or if certain projects are able to be funded for that part. So, anyway, I feel like we're beating a dead horse on this thing for the second month in a row. This plan covered the land use and growth management, economic development, transportation, it does include that, municipal facilities and services. And it's a general plan. It's clear that, looking over the next 20 years, to me, anyway, that many issues, both things that affect internally and externally, will impact this document. So, it must be flexible to the point where we would be able to adjust and be flexible to what's happening, you know, during those period of times. It is reviewed. We have, it's mandated by the Commonwealth of Virginia, that all cities, we've already talked about this, and municipalities, that they prepare and adopt a plan to be reviewed every five years by the planning commission, and in this, our case, the city council, in order to change or amend it, which is what we're doing. And it's a growth plan based on the 2035 plan that we quote many times. And when we're talking about specific projects, do they fall within certain areas? We saw all these maps. It depends on what type of project that we're looking at, and if there's an exception to be made, we discuss that at length about how does it fall within various issues. But in other words, the, I guess my point is that it's a general plan. We cannot get into a whole lot of specifics about this because we're dealing with something 20 years out. Somebody told me the other day, it's like when you buy a car. What's the cost of a car going to be 20 years from now? We think about what a car cost 20 years ago. There are big changes, financial issues and things like that, that we can't, you know, we can kind of take that step by step, but it's a, it's an issue that we certainly, realistically, have to deal with. And so, anyway, that's my comments. But again, it's very similar to what I said last time. You know, I guess based on this, if you're looking for a, if you're looking for a motion, I would move that we go ahead and approve this again, because we did approve it last time. But that's my motion, is to approve the comprehensive plan, 2045 comprehensive plan.
And as I did last month, I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion?
Just one, one comment or one request, because I remember sitting on that side of the table and having the same angst that the young man, that, I can't think who's in the Harris, I think, has, that you stand here at this podium and you ask questions because you don't realize that the people who are sitting here can't answer your questions because you're sitting, you're making a comment. You're not, this is not a question-and-answer series. And I think that it would be appropriate if someone on this side of the table were to explain that to the citizens, that we don't just ignore their questions, we just don't see them as questions, their comments to us. Did I do it?
That's a good point, but it's not a part of the motion and
I mean, no, but it was a comment that I thought needed to be made because that was, that's not the first time that this question has come up lately.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say something real quick. It won't be real quick. We talked last time, and again, I'm not going to talk as long as I did last time. But I'm glad what happened has happened because my worldview changed after I left Williamsburg. Williamsburg, we went to the planning commissioners retreat. The retreat started with a presentation from the Port of Virginia. And the CEO of the port, through Ms. Barbara Nelson, asked to shake hands with the four commissioners from Suffolk. We had the whole state of Virginia, planning commission from the whole state, and the big highlight session was the Port of Virginia. And the only city, Mr. Edwards spoke on his whole presentation with what's going on in Suffolk, Virginia. I'm not exaggerating. This is what was said. This plan that we have right now, I just want to take one step back. Virginia's a Dillon Rule state, which means we get mandates from the state. Virginia's a Dillon Rule state, which means we get mandates from the state that basically tells localities, this is where the state is going, you need to get on board. The state of Virginia has invested billions of dollars in dredging the Port of Virginia. We are not competing anymore against Norfolk and Virginia Beach and Alawite and Richmond. We are now competing against the world. We are trying to win the East Coast, and we are trying to move shipping companies from other countries, from LA, and they're trying to come to Virginia. I know we've been the best-kept secret forever. It's over. It's over. The world is about to come here. And the beautiful thing about it, you can't get to 95. You can't get to Chicago. You can't get to the West Coast unless you pass a 430-square-mile place called Suffolk, Virginia. We're here, and we're not a minor-league region, we're not a minor-league town, and it's time for us to start acting like it. I know everybody was mad about the 460 vote, and it's taking away agriculture land. Guess what? The governor stepped in, the US senator stepped in, and said this is strategic, basically for the country, for what's about to happen. And I'm so glad this comprehensive plan has been designed the way it's been designed. Yes, it didn't meet all of the things that we wanted. And yes, it didn't solve every problem. I'm going to say this again, and I'm going to touch on this real quick. The presentation, we were there for three days, and we had a presentation on regionalism. And we had to listen to Norfolk talk, we had to listen to Chesapeake talk, we had to listen to Norfolk talk about regionalism in Hampton Roads. And what we received was a presentation of three cities working individually and coordinating regionalism. And you know who should have been at the table? Suffolk, Virginia. Should have been at the table about regionalism. You know why? We are the future of the region, and we have to start acting like we are the leader of the region. Because guess what? Those other big cities, they don't want to be leaders. And someone said in the room, it should be Suffolk. Well, this is where it starts. Because you know what? The port is coming, and it's going to be great, it's going to change us forever, and we need to start capitalizing, because the whole world is trying to come to our area. And this plan, in my personal opinion, is the beginning. So yes, it's time to vote and send this on to City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Wine, will you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, once again, this moves forward with a vote of seven to one, with the recommendation of approval.
And this will go to City Council tomorrow night. Thanks for all your comments and your efforts here. The next item on our agenda for our public hearing is the Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2024-005. Mr. Wine, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2024-005, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31 Unified Development Ordinance, UDO. Article 4, zoning, Section 31407, dimensional and density standards, regulations, subsection C, dimensional standards, Table 407-1, dimensional standards, as it relates to the Village Center zoning district. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to Ordinance Text Amendment, OTA 2024-005. Our Assistant Director of Planning, Meg Pittenger, will walk us through this Ordinance Text Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I had to check to make sure it was still afternoon. I'm presenting to you, we discussed this a little bit at the Ordinance Committee last month, about some proposed dimensional standards in the VC zoning district. Some background on this, in February, City Council asked staff to provide counsel with a report regarding some of the Village Center zoning districts and some of the negative impacts that may be resulting as a result of the dimensional standards, which are contained within the zoning ordinance in the table. The VC district was created in 1999 with the creation of the UDO. It is located in Holland, Wellyville, Chuckatack, Oakland, Sandy Bottom, and Hobson. And it's important to note that we're only talking today about parcels and property that have the actual VC zoning, the Village Center zoning. There are other properties within what may be considered a village that do not have this zoning, so those districts, those properties are not being affected by these proposed changes. It's only those properties that have the actual VC zoning district, zoning district on them. And the VC was designed to preserve and encourage development, aimed to align with the historical and existing rural commercial centers, thus they sort of function as little mini downtowns. The issues are that currently, there's no required side setback or rear setback, and the minimum lot sizes are pretty small in the VC zoning district. The maximum building height is also, staff consider to be quite high, at 45 feet, and there is no impervious cover ratio, and I'll talk in a minute about what that means. Infield development is occurring at a high rate in some of the villages, and some of the homes may not be compatible with the existing residential development. Tends to be, existing, some of the existing developments tend to be one-story, kind of smaller houses built kind of some time ago. People go in today, and they're building two-story houses, people want a little bit larger, and some of that may be incompatible. And again, also, the lack of setbacks makes the houses be able to be a little bit closer to the property line. Also, the current building code requires that you have positive drainage away from the foundation of the structure, and some of that may result in some draining onto the adjacent properties. In the past, homes didn't have that requirement in the building code, or were built before there even was a building code, so they may be lower on the property. There are stormwater regulations that do require some capturing. They're a little bit less stringent on individual infill, single-family than they would be on a larger development. These issue, and also, some of these areas you go, the septic systems, there's new septic systems, they have these mounded systems that are a little bit higher, usually out of the ground, they're a little bit more visible. And the zoning regulations do not regulate these, but these can cause some perceived issues that some of the residents may have in some of these newer constructions. So what we've proposed, and you know, Keith just talked, and you all just voted on the comprehensive plan, these were looking at sort of a two-step process. We're proposing some changes to the dimensional table as a first step, and then, once the comprehensive plan is adopted, one of the action items that's recommended is to go back and update, or take a look at updating the village initiative plans that may recommend some additional changes, that may address some additional features. But for right now, the in-between step is to take a look at creating some dimensional standard changes for them. So what those would be is, we would require a seven-and-a-half-foot minimum side setback on either side of, from between the structure and the property line, and down at the bottom there, I have some kind of notes to help, because we talk, you know, in the planning world, zoning world, we talk about setbacks, impervious cover, and sometimes people don't know what we're talking about, so we have to kind of take a step back. So the setback is the distance on the ground from the structure to the property line, okay? So that's what we're talking about. So seven-and-a-half feet on each side. This also would allow some greater area to provide some of that swale and positive drainage away from the structure. Right now, there is no front setbacks. Again, these were designed to sort of function as little mini downtowns. You walk down West Washington Street, you know, the property line, the structures are really close to the property line. So that's how these were sort of designed. And I should take a step back, that we were planning, we're proposing to create separate standards for non-residential and residential. These standards that we're talking about would only affect residential development. We don't want to interfere with people being able to develop commercially in, you know, in the areas where that is appropriate. So we're going to separate out in the table, you'll see on the next slide, so that non-residential will have the same standards that they have right now, and these will just be for residential construction. So we would create for residential, a front setback, a minimum front setback of 20 feet. Right now, there's a maximum front setback of 30, because the idea, again, in a village center, in a downtown, you don't want the buildings but so far back. But for single-family residential, it may be appropriate for them to be a little bit further back. Some of these lots in some of the village areas are deep. So we're proposing to eliminate that maximum front setback, allows parking to be in the front in the driveway. Some of these lots are narrow, so typically, you have to have the parking driveway in the front. Require a 10-foot minimum setback in the rear. So again, if they did set it back, that they can't be but so close to the rear property line, to not negatively affect those properties that might be in the rear. We're proposing to reduce the maximum building height from 45 feet to 35 feet, again, to try and help keep it in scale with what might be out there. And then, the next two are what we think are maybe the most impactful. To establish a maximum impervious cover ratio of .5, which is 50%, and if you, again, you look down there in the notes, the impervious surfaces include buildings, parking areas, any concrete, gravel, and asphalt area. So any of those areas, you'd only be able to do 50% of the lot, which again, will help make the building be not quite so big in footprint with that. Some of these standards, and you'll see again in the table, and you have in your staff report package, kind of, they don't exactly mirror, but they were taken from the RC standards, the residential compact standards, that we felt like that was a district that kind of was close to these VC zoning district. And then, to establish a maximum floor area ratio of .35, or 35%. And again, the floor area ratio is the ratio of the gross floor area of all the structures on the parcel to the gross area of the, to the gross floor area, the gross area of the parcel on which the structures are located. And again, taking that from the RC, that's the same standard that is in the RC. So don't read this table, but this is the full dimensional table, it's Table 407-1, it's where the dimensional standard in zoning is located. So you can see here, I'm going to go to the next slide, this is what it's going to look like when the table is updated. So we will change the current VC and add the word "non-residential" in it. And again, when you're looking at code changes, we're underlining the new text, we're striking through what's going to be deleted. We're removing the maximum density from the non-residential, because there's no density associated with non-residential, but everything else is staying the same there. And then, we're going to add a new category for VC residential, the same minimum lot size, we're going to keep that, the density in there at eight units per acre, we're going to add that 35% of the floor area ratio, the 50% of the impervious cover ratio, maximum building height at 35, the front setback at 20, side setback at seven and a half, and then, the maximum rear setback at 10. Again, no changes to the non-residential. So that is the end of my presentation. With that, I'll stand by for any questions at the end of the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Pittiger. We'll open the public hearing. I don't think staff have any more comments to add to that. Is there anyone in opposition to this Ordinance Text Amendment? Okay, we're going to open this up for a public hearing. Is anyone in favor of this request?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission and city staff. My name is Morgan Butler. I'm a senior attorney with the Southern Environmental Law Center in Charlottesville, and I work on flood resilience issues in Virginia. And it's through this work that I've had the opportunity and pleasure over the past year to meet a number of residents of some of the Suffolk communities that are getting hit the hardest by flooding, including residents of the villages of Hobson, Oakland, and Chuckatack, as well as residents of other communities like Pewsville and Crittenton and Eclipse. In speaking with these folks about the increasing challenges they're facing with flooding, it's clear that there isn't one main source or culprit. Rather, it's a number of causes, including more intense rainstorms, inadequate or neglected drainage infrastructure, and more impervious surface, to name a few. However, one common concern we've heard from residents of villages is that new homes in development are getting built right up against property lines and paving over natural areas that absorb floodwater and channel stormwater between properties, with the result being flooding is increasingly being pushed onto adjacent lots. I want to emphasize that these residents with whom I've spoken were clear that they don't oppose new development, it's just that they want it to be done in a way that respects the existing development and doesn't exacerbate flooding on their own properties. Now, while there is no silver bullet that will solve all the flooding problems that the village residents are confronting, we wish to commend city staff and for developing the proposed changes being discussed tonight, as well as the city councillors who asked that this work be done. We support the proposed changes to the minimum setback requirements and the impervious surface ratio for residential development in the Village Center zoning district. These changes should help address some of the ways that new residential development is exacerbating flooding on existing properties with Village Center zoning. To be sure, these changes won't solve the flooding problems, but hopefully, they'll keep new development from making those problems worse. They're an important step, and an important first step, in addressing the flooding challenges that are affecting many village residents. I did want to offer a couple of questions tonight for clarification that we hope staff can answer, either tonight or in the lead-up to City Council meeting. One of them was a little bit of confusion over that maximum front setback requirement. It looks like those numbers have been adjusted from what was in the staff report, and we think that the change that shows tonight of it being eliminated for the residential is a positive change. It actually showed 30 in the staff report that went out to the public. Also wanted to bring up the question, there was a note in staff's report for council's August 7th work session on this issue that mentioned consideration of a 10-foot setback between septic systems and structures. We've heard lots of concerns from village residents around mound septic systems being built right up against property lines and that impacting flooding. The staff report for that August 7th work session said that the setback may not be feasible due to functional requirements, and we would appreciate hearing a bit more about those requirements, and why a setback between structures and septic systems may not be feasible. Finally, we would just ask staff to provide a brief explanation of the rules around non-conforming uses for the folks in attendance tonight, so that residents of the villages with Village Center zoning understand what the new standards would mean for their current homes if they happen to not meet the standards that are being proposed tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Is there anyone else?
Make my welcomes short. My name is Kelly Hingler, and I'm actually a policy analyst. So I stand before you as a citizen of the City of Suffolk, and yes, I'm very aware of the ports. I'm very aware that every corridor that we have through the city is, actually goes through a crossroad community. Suffolk itself, and its original town, was a crossroad community, if you want to be able to think about it that way. We do not have the trains, and we do not have the waterways, transportation that we had for well over 300-plus years. This is, in fact, very important that we have this village initiative, and we thank Southern Environmental Law Center, as well as EPA Financial Services, SEERCAP, and others who are actively engaged at this time in the communities with working technical plans. It is myself and others who sat for Oakland and Chuckatack in the midst of their flooding well over a year with DEQ, it's 100,000, no, $100 million, okay, award for ARPA, and with VDH, and listened intently and learned everything that we could, because there's no wastewater main on that road that the port also needs. There's no wastewater main in Oakland and Chuckatack, and so they're sitting some people with privies. So while we're, after our lofty regional ideas, we're here for the inhabitants of the City of Suffolk, and we thank Southern Environmental Law Center for taking their time and efforts to look legislatively for us. They have quite an eye for smart growth, okay, for the tenants of smart growth, and took a good look at this. We thank our council member, Shelley Butler-Burlough, for bringing this motion, for it being supported before this planning commission. Please understand that there are people who are in this room and who are sitting at home today, who are willing to give everything that they have for this city-- home today, who are willing to give everything that they have for this city, all the professional efforts, unbilled hours, relentless nights of understanding concepts that we may not know. And for people and such entities as Southern Environmental Law Center, willing to come forward and partner with our city, because they did have some discussions with our city staff members, to take a look at this village initiatives, we appreciate that, wholeheartedly appreciate the city for doing that. So at the end of the day, yes, I support this village initiative and also any other constructs that must be addressed to it and public comments that are made by it. Now, I will say, as a point of policy, in 1988 and 1989, once again, and I'm sorry, attorney for the city, it does matter because smart growth does consider and must consider the National Historic Preservation Act. We must have every 10-year surveys, not because we're trying to tell people how to paint their door red, it's because at this time we have unprecedented BIPOC money, Black Indigenous People of Color money, in these environmental justice communities that is being throttled because we don't have an up-to-date city of Suffolk, village by village, including Oakland, which is not even on the national historic place of register, okay, for our country. We cannot access those funds. It is tied into this village initiative. Please do hear us and hear our thanks, but we're working at this fundamentally, not to poke an eye, but we need your help. We need your help when we say something is not up to date. We need our city to act so that we can act on funding that is available to all of us. At the end of the day, we were able to get $750,000 support by a petition that was placed by our own city utilities department, non-matching funds for just the wastewater main for Oakland for sanitation. This was brought to you by the people of Suffolk, and we bring to you this village initiative's plan that was much needed and ordinance, and we thank you.
Anyone else speak in favor of this request?
119 Suffolk Meadows, I'll make this quick. So in attending some of the village events, recently, Juneteenth being one of them, we heard from a lot of the citizens of the village, both from Hobson, which is where the event was held, and others. They're very much in favor of any proposals that the city puts in place to help them. One of their, you know, main concerns was the flooding. Some of the comments I received after it was presented was, not that they're against it by any means, please don't take it that way, but a lot of the words that were used at the last presentation was, "We hope this solves the issue. We think this should do good. It looks like this is going to make a difference." And they just want to make sure that when this is approved, if something doesn't work, so we had a diagram up there, which was like a triangle from the higher new development to the established with the drainage system, and they're just, you know, they hope it works, you hope it works. They just want to make sure that if it doesn't work, you know, will something be done to help alleviate the continued flooding in the villages, because it's a big, big issue. And they wanted me to pass that along to you. The other was what Vice Mayor Ward had said, was there's a couple villages that were not listed on this, and there seems to be some misunderstanding even in my head of as to, what's the difference between a village center and a village? I mean, I look at a village center as being a downtown-type area, and that's how it's talked about, but I really don't see much of that in any of the villages that I've attended, so it seemed like there's something else there. So they would just like some more clarification as to why this and not the whole village. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Ryan. That concludes the time for the proponents. Is anyone in opposition? Ma'am, I know you've been sitting here all day, and I realize why you're sitting here. I will take a motion to extend the proponents' time to let that young lady come up to the podium and make her statement. Can I take a motion?
I'd make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition?
Thank you very much. Given me this time. My name is Lorna Angela Taylor, and I reside in the Oakland Village. I have been there for 68 years. My family has been in that area since 1864, by established by the Little Bethel Baptist Church. I know you all are for some of this development, but my church, right now, which is 158 years old, is being damaged from the flooding that's coming from the Chukatac Coast development. As Mr. Morgan stated, that it's not a whole lot that you all can do, but there are a lot of things that can be done. We're doing the best that we can to save our church and to save our community. Now, I know they're talking about the setbacks, but from Reeves Ferry all the way through Oakland, when I was growing up, there was a defined line. All of the houses were in a line. These new homes that are being built are flooding our properties. That development behind the Little Bethel Baptist Church is flooding every single property going across to Pembroke Lane. I get out, when it's raining, I take pictures, and I send them to our city council members. I hope that the city will come up with smart growth, and I think you all think that this plan is going to resolve that, and I hope and pray that it does. But what I'm saying to you today is our seniors in our community, which I am one of now, is having problems with flooding on their property. My neighbor's house, which is at the corner of Gottland Boulevard and Everest Road, he can't even come out of his house because of the water. The water's running off of Everest Road into my yard and under both of our houses. So we have a serious flooding problem out there. One of another of our seniors, where one of the new homes was built beside him, the water is going into his porch. He's fighting water. I'm fighting water. We're all fighting water out there. So I hope and pray, as I said, that this plan will resolve some of these problems. But one thing we do need is our ditches clean and the outfall ditches clean. So I thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Now that has concluded the time for the proponents. Is there anyone in opposition to this tax amendment? Seeing none. Ms. Peddinger, you have any comments to add to the rebuttal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The gentleman pointed out there is an error in the table for the maximum front setback. It does show 30 there. That should be nothing in that table. So when you all make your motion, if you are making a motion to approve, we'd request that you make a motion to amend the table and remove that. There should be no notation there for maximum front setback for the residential, for the added VC residential, and then we will correct that moving forward.
See that? I can't see that. Okay, we're going to, that completes the public hearing, close the public hearing. Questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the approval of OTA 2024-005 as adjusted.
I'll second that.
Got a second? Okay. Any discussion of the motion?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
And this will go to city council on September 18th. The next item on our agenda is ordinance text amendment OTA 2024-006. Mr. Ryan, you find to read the caption?
Yes. Ordinance text amendment OTA 2024-006 initiated by the city of Suffolk for amendments to the code of the city of Suffolk, Chapter 31 Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, Article 4, zoning, Section 31, 406, Use Regulation Subsection C, permitted uses, Table 406-1, principal uses permitted in zoning districts, and Appendix A, definitions as it relates to bars, nightclubs, and live entertainment. When you act on this request, you will be making a motion and recommendation to city council on and as it relates to ordinance text amendment OTA 2024-006. Once again, our Assistant Director of Planning, Meg Peddinger, will walk you through this ordinance text amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Again, good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of Planning Commission. What a way to end, with live entertainment. We're going to get entertained here. All right. So some of the issues that we have come across is currently the definition in the UDO of bars and nightclubs states that a bar or restaurant or similar establishment where a dance floor or live entertainment is provided. Live entertainment itself is not defined in the UDO, and therefore, a CUP is required for any live entertainment use, whether that's, you know, trivia, something like that, that may or may not be what you might think of as a nightclub. And those uses then need to be classified as a bar or nightclub, which, you know, some business owners will object to because they're not running a nightclub. But that's the only use currently that allows for live entertainment to be provided. We also discovered that nightclubs are permitted with a CUP in some zoning districts that perhaps might not be appropriate, the RU24, the MUC40, B1, the O&amp;I, the VC, and the FRRD, I always want to say that wrong. But live entertainment with some, you know, with some stipulations may be acceptable in some of these districts. So the objectives of this code amendment would be to define live entertainment, so we can spell out exactly what we mean by that, and to allow for live entertainment to be provided indoors without the need for a conditional use permit within certain hours as an accessory use to another permitted use. And I think that's a key, that they have to have some other permitted principal use going on at that location. And then we would also exempt public agencies from needing to get a CUP for live entertainment to kind of, you know, make that not, not be a process for them. We had some smaller businesses wanting to come and do live entertainment on a small scale, and again, they were having to go through this whole process with you all, with city council, to obtain the CUP. And we felt like for these low-impact uses that aren't creating noise outdoors, aren't going into the late hours, that may be appropriate to allow them to not have to have a CUP. So the changes that we're proposing are to add a definition for live entertainment, which all the definitions for this are contained in Appendix A, so you have that in your staff report, and then to amend the permitted uses table, which is 406-1, to allow that to, for a couple of things, and I'll walk through what those are. So currently, again, we've got this nightclub definition, which talks about bars, which bars by themselves aren't really permitted in Virginia, you gotta have a, you gotta sell food, where a dance floor or live entertainment is provided. So this is what the table looks like. You know, again, where you see the dashes, that's not permitted. Where you see the C, that is a conditional use, allowed with a conditional use permit if there was, well, we'll go through that. So our proposals will be to strike the definition of nightclub altogether, to eliminate that from the UDO definitions. And again, when you see strike through, that's going to be deleted text. And then we would propose to add this definition of live entertainment. It's a little bit long, but I'm going to read it. So any entertainment, indoor or outdoor, involving performances or delivery of entertainment by one or more persons. Live entertainment includes but is not limited to musical ensembles, solo performers, including events involving emcees or hosts such as trivia or bingo, DJs, karaoke, comics, comedians, and theatrical acts when performed in a venue other than a theater. Operation of any live entertainment component outdoors requires a conditional use permit. Activities held by public agencies are exempt from these provisions. So if adopted, this definition would be inserted into the UDO in the appendix A for where the definitions are located. Then in the permitted uses table, we would propose to remove the bars and nightclub use from the table completely. And again, you have the full table in your staff report, which made it a little bit long. Because we're amending the table by removing something, inserting something, got to have the whole table in there so that it's complete when it gets adopted. So we would propose to add live entertainment after 10:00 PM as a use in the permitted use tables, table. And we would allow live entertainment as an accessory use to a permitted principal use in any district, as a matter of right, without a CUP, from 10:00 AM to, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And those times were selected because they align with the noise ordinance table in the UDO, that the quiet hours are basically from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And so we talked about, we kicked around a few other kind of schemes of hours, but we felt like those aligning with the noise ordinance, because noise is kind of one of the principal things that the public is concerned about on some of these activities. And we would allow, propose to allow live entertainment after 10:00 PM or outdoors with a CUP in the B1, the B2, the VC, CBD, the O&amp;I, the FRRD, but not in the RU24, which is residential district, and the MUC40, which again is more residential in there. And then we would add a note, and we'll get to what the note is here after the use table. So this, and this, don't get hooked up on this because I'm going to give you a cleaner version, but this is what, again, what the table will look like as an amended thing. And you've got the full table, but this is a snippet. So we would delete that whole bars and nightclubs use, and then we would add this live entertainment after 10:00 PM and add the note that applies to that. So this is a cleaner version, and I can switch back to the other if you need clarification, but this is a cleaner version of what the table would end up looking like. We would add that live entertainment after 10:00 PM, not permitted, you see the dashes, in all those districts going up to MUC40, permitted with a CUP, B1, B2, VC, CBD, O&amp;I, and then in the FRRD. And we would add the note, and the note says, "Indoor live entertainment shall be permitted as an accessory use to a permitted principal use in any district, as a matter of right, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Any live entertainment outside of these hours will require a conditional use permit from city council." So that is the scope of what the changes are, and I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you again, Ms. Peddinger. I will now open the public hearing. Is anyone to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a comment that I know in some past meetings and some different things that have come before us over the past years, we've had some questions dealing with the entertainment partition or the section on these, and these changes do clarify this substantially, and I think will make a pleasant addition to the ordinance.
The ordinance committee, this one.
So I'll make a motion, we approve OTA 2024-006.
Motion? You got a second for Commissioner Hicks?
Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion of the motion?
I have a quick question, I mean regarding the motion. What was the rationale with moving it out of the mixed-use district?
At this point, we looked closely at all of our zoning districts, and it's important to note, at this point, we don't have any MUC40 in the city. It doesn't mean we won't. Folks who typically go that route go through the MUD, in which they're essentially picking out which uses they feel appropriate. But we would envision if we were to get a MUC40 development or zoning for consideration, that it would probably be a little heavier on the residential side at this time. So that was the rationale. However, if it's the prerogative of this commission, nothing would preclude you all from. from incorporating it with a conditional use permit like the other districts.
Mr. Wyon, I respect the wisdom of the ordinance committee. So I believe it as is. I was just asking that question. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Were you there on that discussion?
I plead the fifth.
Missed that one. Okay. Where were we at? Oh, Mr. Wyon, you call for the vote, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question about that. For those of us who are not on the ordinance committee, commission, or committee of this, of the planning commission, how does this affect the already existing issues that we have already approved and all that? Is this a, are they grandfathered, or does this only apply to those new applications that are coming through? I mean, I don't know how you enforce. My question is, how do you enforce it?
How do you enforce it as far as?
With the changes that we're recommending.
So that would be similar to how we operate with any zoning issue now. It would have come to our attention, and we would have to investigate, and it comes down to the hours of operation.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that some of the ones that we have approved in the past and City Council has gone along with it, how does that affect them? How does it affect those nightclubs?
The short answer is it does not. Their conditional use permit will remain valid, and this will have no impact on their ability to operate within the confines of those conditions associated with your use permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Director, just make sure I understand that anybody who says it was a no, now they can operate up to ten o'clock with live entertainment. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyon. And the ordinance committee, thanks for your efforts in this endeavor. That concludes the public hearings. Do we have any old business that need to be addressed? Business?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. I was going to make, not, that's later, okay. I figured I was going to jump in because I didn't get to jump in earlier.
You had an opportunity.
I just didn't move fast enough.
Okay. New business, status report from the council meeting on July seventeen.
Yes, sir. There were three public hearings that went before City Council, well, I'm sorry, three public hearings and an additional item that was carried over from a previous meeting. But rezoning request, RZN twenty twenty-three zero zero seven, that was a conditional rezoning for the White Marsh Plaza, in which it was going to be a large component of residential redevelopment there. That was approved with the proffers as presented by the applicant. A rezoning in the Bell Harbor development to switch zoning internal to the planned community out there, swapping an O and I zoning district for RU eighteen and vice versa. That was approved with the proffers as offered by the applicant. Holland Road storage conditional use permit out there on Holland Road, that was approved with conditions. And the item that was carried over was conditional use permit request CUP twenty twenty-three zero two five, Wyne Oak Trail. That was to grant a conditional use permit for a surface mining operation, our borrow pit out there on Wyne Oak Trail. That was approved with the conditions that staff recommended.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wyon. Now we go to Commissioners' comments, Mrs. Taylor.
Well, we've got a couple of things. One thing, I was going to make a few comments on my rationale for not supporting the comp plan, and they were basically rehashing some of the things that I already shared with everybody here. So in some ways, I'm glad I didn't have the opportunity to try to follow Johnny Edwards. Because he does a heck of a job with that. One other thing that I wanted to make a comment on is to Officer Jackson. One of the things I look forward to on every meeting was the opportunity to come in and say hi to you as you sat at your get desk out front, and you're going to be missed, trust me. The other thing came up in the discussions dealing with the water on the properties in Chukatac. And I guess, Kevin, I'll just say if there's anything that the planning department can do to help those folks out, to get public works or somebody to really look into that. I do visit some property on Pembroke Lane weekly, and after a rainstorm, it's my understanding that that project across the road that they were referencing, a cove, I believe it is, the water runs towards Route ten. And when it originally was put in, it was flooding the ditch right there on Route ten and some properties behind that. And then I think the city came in and put in a culvert or something under Route ten, diverted it across the road, and then behind a couple of those residences on the right side when you go down Pembroke Lane. What I've noticed is that the ditching and everything was put in there, now the yards on the, I guess that's the east side of Route ten, completely flood whenever there is a substantial downpour. So I think the city still has some serious drain problems that should be addressed as a result of that subdivision. So if there's anything that the planning department can do out there, I think the citizens deserve something to be done. So other than that, enjoy the meeting.
I've got a comment. Mr. Jackson, I want to thank you for your service, and every time you speak before the meeting, you do have at least my undivided attention. I've always gotten a kick out of that, so we're going to miss you. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
Should we worry? I'm going to be long again, but first of all, I want to thank the city for allowing us to go to the retreat. I thoroughly enjoyed the retreat.
Yes.
It was, it was, it was, we all went to the solar farm presentation together, all four of us on the back row. And I say this, we're complaining about solar farms, Central Virginia's complaining about data centers. Everybody has something. And that was one of the cool things, you know, you get around your peers, and everybody has a complaint or issue that's vexing. And it was interesting to listen to how different people are handling different things around the state. So that was beautiful. And the thing on regionalism, I'm just going to leave it. I'm just going to leave it there. It was very disappointing. But I really want to thank the city, and it was nice to see the staff and everybody hanging around. There has not been a major event in my life where Officer Julius Jackson has not been in the room. Officer Jackson and I were members of the same church in Buckholme, Virginia, and I know Officer Jackson, I mean, when I used to hire. So far back we go, I used to hire. And Officer Jackson was at times my Sunday school teacher in the church, and, you know, major male, male source of my life. Officer Jackson's always been in the audience. Even the day I buried my father, it was Officer Jackson that led to possession. And, you know, it's amazing when you see a familiar face on a day like this. Like every time something major happens, Officer Jackson's always been in the audience. When I first started on the planning commission, I was young and everything, one of the familiar faces I saw was Officer Jackson. Through this whole ride, you know, you can always depend on Officer Jackson. So I want to say publicly, thank you for always being there. Officer Jackson is a person who doesn't need a badge to have presence. He is a model of authority without a badge, because Officer Jackson is a man. And I appreciate who you are, and I wish you nothing but the best in the future.
Staff has a couple.
Staff?
Staff does. All right.
I'll save mine.
First, Officer Jackson. I can't top anything Johnny Edwards. I don't think anyone can. But I've been here eight years, I think. I forget. It's been weird. It has been an absolute pleasure working alongside you. And our department has really enjoyed working with you, and we're going to miss you. But good for you, and enjoy that fishing rod. But I know next time I'm walking down the hallway and I don't have you hollering back at me, I'm going to miss that. But yeah, enjoy your retirement. It is well-deserved. And things are going to be a little different and weird here for a while, but we know we're in good hands. Second, thank you for those who were able to make it to the planning conference. It was a great conference this year. It was a really, really good one. Next year, it's in Portsmouth, so it's going to be right down the road. It's not during a planning commission week, so we're all going. So please, if you can make, set aside that Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and half of that Wednesday of mid-July. And I'm planning, hopefully, we can share a few of things we've learned in Suffolk as topics. We are approaching the CIP time. It seems we just adopted one, but here we are again. So I'm planting the seed for next month, but as always, we will be appointing two planning commissioners to serve on that CIP subcommittee. And lastly, I'll invite Meg back up. We're excited to welcome a new planner with us, and she'll introduce him.
So I will briefly say, thank you, Officer Jackson. From literally my very first day, literally, you welcomed me. And the very first time I was in planning commission, and you said the whole, if you go past the barrier, you'll have my undivided attention. I was just like, okay, you do. So again, congratulations. But yes, we have Gonzalo Borche. He is our brand-new senior planner that started just over, just under a month ago. So this is his first planning commission meeting. We're getting him spun up, and you will see him presenting before you, before too long. Sooner than later, since we just got six new recent metals. So you may see him soon. So thank you, Gonzalo.
Thank you, pleasure.
Officer Jackson, as I mentioned earlier, it seemed like we've been doing this for a long time. I started on planning in nineteen ninety-nine. And so the week that my late wife, before she passed, the Sunday before she passed, Officer Jackson and his wife, Gail, came to visit her. And the day that, not the day that she passed, we unplugged, the day before when she was coded, Jackson's wife, Gail, came into the room and walked me out of the room while they were trying to resuscitate her. And she made the necessary phone calls for me. He's always been there whenever I ran into him, needed support, give support, has always been there. As Johnny mentioned earlier, as expression goes, you're the man. Thank you again. And to address Commissioner Hicks' comments earlier about questions coming to the commission, my understanding, and the attorney can straighten me out, we cannot make any promises, we cannot answer any questions, we can refer the question to staff. We're only a recommending body to council. Council has the final word. Am I correct? Nothing else, we stand adjourned.